All right, so just call to order our Select Board meeting for July 10th, 2019. Just go right into the consent agenda here. First thing is several warrants. We have warrants AP 1951, AP 1951-2, AP 1951-S, AP 1952, AP 1952-S, AP 2001, AP 2001-2, PR 1949, and PR 2001. We have our warrants, or our minutes from March 20th, 2019. We have Hadley Police Department appointments, which I can hold until after the consent agenda. We have a contract draft approval for the Fire Chief. We have a landlord lien waiver for Action Ambulance EMS. We have surplus property to sell, a safe and a council on aging van. We have a cemetery mowing IFB award, which we have identified GTC Landscaping to award the bid to. And we have a proclamation for Merle Buckout, which I'll hold into the end, and I can read that. I don't know if anyone's here for that.
She's not here. That was presented to her at an event last night on your behalf.
Okay, do we want to read that, or do we want to just... We could read it. We'll read it.
Yeah, I would...
Okay.
Yes.
We'll read that. So...
I see a lot of things here that need to be pulled out, almost all of it.
Okay, what do you want to pull out?
The Fire Department, the Chief, Police Department, the ambulance contract. I don't know. Guess we could do the surplus property. And we're going to read the proclamation, so there's only a couple of...
Okay, so how about the warrants and the minutes?
Oh, the warrants. Yeah, that sounds good.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Chief, if you want to do the appointments, we can start there.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
So seated in the back over here, you'll see four fine gentlemen. We have two sets of appointments. We have three individuals here who we would like to present to be hired as special police officers to replenish our special pool, which as you know, we like to hire from within for full time. And then we have one individual here who is currently in the special pool, who we'd like to promote to our full time ranks. So all the way on the end, you'll have Tenzin Kenrap. And then next to him, you have Anthony Liberto. He has been working for Loomis Armored Car since 2014. And then on the end over here is Brendan Smith. Brendan resides here in Hadley, and he graduated high school on Prince Edward Island, Canada, and is currently working on his associate's degree at Greenfield Community College. Brendan completed his Reserve Police Academy training in 2018, and has been working for the Goshen Police Department as a reserve officer since February of this year. He has also worked as a carpenter for Broochi Construction right here in Hadley, and has volunteered for safe passage as a call taker on their domestic violence crisis line. Each of these officers do have aspirations, as you know, to become full time police officers here in the town of Hadley, and they have the necessary qualifications to begin our field training process immediately. So based upon that, I would recommend that all three of these individuals be appointed as special police officers for the town of Hadley.
I'll make that motion for these five gentlemen to be appointed to our special police officers. Thank you.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
So before they all get up and do everything, we have one more. Jake Marine. You probably recognize Jake. He works for us now. Jake resides in East Long Meadow, and he has been with us since October of last year. He previously worked as a police officer at Western New England College since 2016, where because of his efforts and his knowledge as a police officer, he was made a field training officer not long after he started. He has also earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Winnick. His maturity showed almost immediately. But he has already received high praise from his coworkers and from citizens alike. Jake knew that we had some vacancies to be filled, and potentially a new position so that we could create our full time school resource officer. So wanting to show his dedication, he left his job at Western New England College and committed to us on a full time basis. That should be noted. That's a very risky move for him to show his dedication to us. For the last several weeks, Jake has worked any and every possible open shift, and has shown that he wants to be a Hadley police officer. For these reasons, I would recommend him to be appointed as a full time police officer for the town of Hadley.
Great. I'll make a motion for Jake to become our full time police officer.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Second.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Glad to see you on the streets.
Congratulations. And then our next item is the contract draft approval for Fire Chief Mike Spengen. And this is a draft approved, so are we approving the full contract with this?
Right, so you all negotiated the contract. It's not ready for signature.
I think there was just one thing that we may want to... Mike, would you like to chime in on this for a minute? Were we going to do something different with the payout?
Yeah, actually, I've spoken with David and with Justin, and I have funding remaining in my salaries. So they, if, with your approval, after the approval of the contract, if you want to do it, we can go with option A of that section, to have it completed at the 80 percent.
Complete, so we don't do a three year buyout, where we were going to do three years, so that we could just finish it this year, and there wouldn't have to be any further. It would be a done deal for his compensatory time.
Okay. That sounds good.
Anybody have any questions on it?
No, I remember us discussing that.
Remember, yeah.
Yeah, I was just trying to see the amount, but that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the Fire Chief's contract for the next three years.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Are you not leaving the room yet, are you?
Not yet. He's in the back on the corner.
I didn't even know you were back there. You're hiding.
See, the old lady sees everything.
Yeah, he's hiding behind those officers. So we have the landlord lien waiver. Was that one we wanted to pull?
Yes.
So the story here is that Action Ambulance is changing banks, and so the bank wants to get a document signed by the landlords, since we are housing the ambulance and the operations in municipal property. Basically, I had Joel Bard, our attorney, review this. He gave it a clean bill of health. This is a routine matter. So I put it on the consent agenda for your signature.
Okay.
I would just like to make of note, too, it certainly is a good investment. I don't think we have anything to worry about. I think the ambulance has done an excellent job in our town in response. It actually has made us money, and I think at some point, we'll be able to bring back further details on that, on how we're doing that way. So I'll make a motion to sign the landlord lien waiver for Action Ambulance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
And then we have a surplus property sale of a safe and council on aging van. Safe is one we've talked about. It's down at DPW.
That came from here.
Is that the one that came from here?
Yeah.
And then the council on aging van, we received the new van, so the old van is now surplus property.
Is there anything, if any, use to us with that van that would be of any value to us? No? Okay.
No, we tried that with one of the school vans.
Yeah.
And of course, when you need it, that's when we have the most problems with the van. So maintenance wise, it's like the water department just got a trailer. And we've got a trailer that we had gotten with the cones and the barricades and stuff like that that the police department used. It's easier to hook up to a trailer and put a couple tires on it every five years or six years than it is to maintain a vehicle. And then, as I said, the time you really need it, it's not running correctly or not running at all.
Yeah, and I know that was in...
We talked about it.
Disrepair. That's why we kind of needed a new one, so...
I just wanted to make sure that there was no need for us anywhere.
It would probably make a nice camper.
Go for it, John.
If you want to park it in your backyard.
I'm glad my husband's not home to watch this on TV tonight.
Maybe he can get a...
I don't think so. We're not telling him, are we, John?
You can see it parked over there at the shop.
Yeah, great, yeah. Maybe he'll be living in it. It's a new home.
All right. Can we have a motion to approve that?
Where is it going? Municipal, municipal?
Yeah, municipal is the easiest thing. You call them up, and they turn into a pile of cash.
Yeah, because after I had mentioned a little bit about the safe, there's been some other interest now, so...
Good, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, so authorization...
Yeah, just a motion.
Motion to sell the safe and the COA van.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have cemetery mowing award. Right now, we're recommending GTC Landscaping, but we do have a list of the bids here. Like to check it out.
Is that somebody local?
They're on Belcher Town.
How did their bid compare to past cost for maintaining the cemeteries?
It looks like we have just enough money to make this contract, so it was a difficult contract we're bid to evaluate, because there were mowing prices, and some were higher, and some were lower, and then there were seasonal cleanup, and some were higher, some were lower, and weren't the same people, so... But the total value of the contract is very clear, that the low bidder is GTC Landscaping out of Belcher Town. We checked their references. They came back very positive. So according to the rules of the land, we have to give it to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain on that one.
Okay. And then we just have a quick proclamation to read for Merle Buckout. So this is Commonwealth of Massachusetts, town of Hadley, by the Select Board, proclamation 2019. Whereas Merle Buckout joined the Mount Holyoke Range Advisory Committee on November 20th, 1984. And whereas Merle Buckout represented the town of Hadley for 35 years on range advisory committee. And whereas Merle Buckout also served 17 years on the Hadley Cemetery Committee as the Hockenheim Cemetery Representative. And whereas Merle Buckout has earned the respect and affection of family, friends, and residents of the town of Hadley. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Hadley, Massachusetts, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to extend this proclamation to Merle Buckout for recognition of 35 years of volunteer service to the town of Hadley, with sincere congratulations and thanks. Given this, it's dated the ninth day of July, because this was presented yesterday in the year of 2019.
Congratulations, Merle.
Congratulations. Yeah. And we have a opening now for public comments. Opening now here is... Yeah.
Well, I'll be quick, and I'm really just here on behalf of Andrea Stanley and myself, who organized the Hadley Common Beer and Cider Garden, which had its final day last Friday, Fridays in a row, sun every day. And it was, from our angle, and from a lot of emails, and people talking to us during and after and around town, a huge success. I feel like it really brought community together. I met neighbors that live really close to me that I've never met before, which was wonderful, and people that I looked forward to seeing each week, because I came back. But really, I'm here to thank the town for making it not just easy through all the processes and the help that we got, but like, fun. And it made us feel very connected, and I don't think we could have done it without the help of Fire Chief in particular, who showed up and made sure that our energy was flowing, so the music could happen, and the lights could twinkle, and the folks on detail, the police and fire department, who came with smiles on their face, willingness to help. And it just felt like a real community collaboration. And yeah, and I hope that if there are any questions about it, or concerns, or anything, that we can talk about that. Overall, I think that it just went too long. 3:30 is too early to start, but other than that, I'd say 5:00 to 9:00 next year, decide to do it again. Maybe a few different vendors rotating in to get more people in the community involved, keeping it still totally focused on Hadley agriculture and business. And yeah, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks. It's great. Anyone else? Okay, so...
Before we begin, it's important that we be broadcasting, and I'm getting messages that we're not broadcasting. Yes, let... Well, I'm going to have to check out something across the street to that effect, so...
Okay, we can wait on, if you guys don't mind, we'll just wait on that for right now and go to some other items, and then come back. Is that okay?
Bond issue.
The bond issue? Because we have to wait for...
Yeah.
I just want to wait for the bond issue. Yeah, okay. Yeah, let's do, since I see Alan back there, let's do the Chapter 61A Notice of Intent to Convert to Other Use. This is our right of first refusal for some land on Aquavita Road. We are recommending that we waive the right of first refusal for the 120-day waiting period in which the town may exercise their right of first refusal. I don't know, David, if you want to say anything else, or we want to make a motion?
This is a parcel that we looked at previously for a possible acquisition for the town. It became very clear that the town was not interested, particularly the funding source was not interested. So at this point, there's no reason for us not to grant the waiver of first refusal.
I'll make a motion to waive the right of first refusal for the former Sandy Beach location, 61A.
I'll second that. John, did you do that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, any further discussion about this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was easy, Al.
Easy enough. Too easy, yeah. Do you want us to sign it? Sign it?
Sure.
Do we want to do... Oh, you got it. I don't know if we have two copies there.
There are a couple of them. I have another one here if you need.
I think I already signed it. I knew we would, so I did it.
Jennifer, it's just that one page.
Yeah, just that one page there.
Do we have to have more than two copies?
Yeah.
Do you want to just make a copy?
Complete the form.
Okay. Okay, and then we have a request for a slowdown for children's sign. It looks like a resident requests a sign on Rocky Hill Road advising motorists to reduce speed due to children. The Chief of Police has reviewed and supports this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
What's your draft?
What part of Rocky Hill Road is it?
Yeah, further discussion. Yeah, do we know where it's going approximately? Does any...
Did you hear anything about it, Mike?
No. It's a sign saying slow down.
Yeah.
Slow down, children.
I mean, yeah.
Children, slow down.
Could...
Could go either way.
Yeah. I mean, it's not a sign that says speed up for children, so that's good. At least it's going the right direction. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I like some informationized...
I know, yeah.
I mean, are you going to put one every thousand feet on Rocky Hill Road?
One, one sign.
Yeah, one sign, the police chief of police has reviewed and supports it.
Well, because there's two ways on Rocky Hill, so I think you would put two signs...
I think you had a little beer before you came.
No, I didn't. I don't know what's happening. The heat's getting to me.
I think you would put a sign both ways on Rocky Hill Road, because if the children are playing in the road, it could hit either way.
Yeah.
It's only the people coming with me masked, that's me.
I'm not exactly sure if I lived on Rocky Hill Road, I would be letting my kids out on Rocky Hill Road. Are we all set, John?
Yeah, we're good. Okay, great. Perfect timing.
On TV.
Okay. So we will move into meeting with the Chief Financial Advisor for bond authorization with the Finance Committee.
Where'd David go?
Are you leaving?
Why? I just had one question before you go. Was there anything at the meeting yesterday morning?
It was this morning.
It was this morning? With the subfire station? Nothing special?
Nothing special.
Okay. That's all I want. Thank you.
We're on the air.
We are on the air, David. And we are going to get started. So the town of Hadley Chief Financial Advisor, David Eisenthal, Unibank, and Town Treasurer, Linda Sanderson, will present the results of bond bidding for the most recent bond authorization. Do you guys want to take it from here?
Should we start with the bond rating?
Yeah, yeah. I think David should announce it.
So we met for four hours with S&amp;P Global a couple Fridays back, and we presented all the information that we could think of that was relevant to our credit rating. That included the character of the town, certainly our finances, a bit about our history. We took a bus tour to show the sites, our relationships with important institutions such as the University of Massachusetts. And in particular, they focused in on our OPEB strategy. It seemed like that caught a lot of their attention, and we talked about how we're managing our funded liabilities, and the plans, policies, procedures, practices for handling finances for the town. And as a result, they gave us an upgrade from a AA+ to a AAA, and that is the highest credit rating available. So this is very good for the town of Hadley. A lot of people put a lot of hard work into making this happen, but everybody deserves credit. The Select Board by your leadership, the department heads by their professionalism, their professional knowledge, their work ethic, their contributions. We have a lot of good people who know their job, and they perform as well every single day. Linda Sanderson did an incredible amount of work, and David Eisenthal helped guide us through the whole process, particularly when we had questions, because these are waters where we don't swim very often, and you do. So it's a good day for the community, a good day for us. And so I'm going to allow you to talk about the results of the bidding on the bonds.
And I just want to say thank you all for your hard work doing that. I mean, that, I mean, I was confident we were going to get the AAA rating, but I know it was stacked against us. I tried to will it into happening, but I, you know, you guys did a lot, went really the extra mile to get us over that line. And I mean, that's, I think it's going to be great. And as in the bond, you'll present later, you know, the interest rates are much better than what we were expecting and budgeting, so, you know, from the taxpayers, thank you, because that will be saving us money year to year.
Unless we forget about the Finance Committee, who are very important to our whole budget process, and the contributions that you provide, and the lively debate that you offer on a lot of topics. You're very much partners in all of this, and each deserves credit for your contributions.
We should tell them the first thing he said, that the examiner said, is he looked around at the room, and he said, "I feel like I know you. I watched your town meeting." So we're all kind of like, "Ah." So when he saw anyone who went to the mic and spoke about the budget, presented any of the articles that night, so right off the bat, he's saying how our community obviously works well together. And I mean, we know, he watched right to the end, honestly, right through to the flag and the marijuana articles and the whole thing. So it was, it was an interesting way to start, and I thought it's interesting to hear an outsider's perspective on how well our town meeting runs, even as people argue and have differences of opinion, whether it's on finances or another area, that it does work well. I think we sometimes forget that, as we're always struggling over one issue or another at our various meetings, that on balance, we actually do work well together. We get good results. We're a fiscally conservative town. We have to be, because that's what the people want. And we're, I think, fiscally, yeah, conservative, and we make, and wise. I think we make good decisions.
I think we're responsible. I think that having been on boards for several years now myself, and how much the total financial team in this town has worked for the size of our town, and how well that it works together, and how we've gone from A to AA to now AAA and AA+. I mean, we kind of just moved it along and tried to find things that improved our town, and how we took responsibility for it with the OPEB. And when you go to meetings outside, or you go to the MMA meeting, and you find that no towns around us, or not hardly any in the state of Massachusetts, have even thought about putting any money into OPEB, that, you know, taking the bull by the horns as we did, you know, several years ago, it came with resistance, because it was a big chunk of money that we were going to have to start off with each year to put in there, and where were we going to find that? And you all on our financial team, you know, worked us all through that. So thank you to everybody that did that. We really appreciate it, and very proud to be Hadley. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're very happy with how that went.
Mr. Chairman, I can sort of add a little color to that. I mean, I think with the upgrade, there really were three areas that S&amp;P focused on. I think the very strong financial reserves, at the end of fiscal year 18, reserves to 16% of general fund expenditures, and that's considered by S&amp;P to be very strong. I think management and policies and practices were crucial here, and particularly OPEB. I think it was the OPEB policies, in fact, that put the town over the top. And then the economy, strong tax base. I mean, you've got a billion dollars of valuation with a population level over 5,000. Those are very strong numbers. Participation in a broad and diverse economy, the Springfield SMSA, that's considered to be a plus. They did express one concern that they'll be watching, and that is that the Springfield area economy isn't, is in fact, they're seeing signs of some deterioration, which they're going to be watching. My feeling is that it would take quite a bit of deterioration for that to affect this newly assigned rating, but it's something to be aware of, and they did bring this up. So yes, and I've worked with the town long enough to remember the single As in the 90s. The town had Moody's ratings from back in the day up to about 10 years ago. You know, the A rating was throughout the 90s until 97, A2 in 1997, and then AA3 in 2010. And actually, the town retired all of its Moody's rated bonds probably about seven or eight years ago. We really appreciate it, and very proud to be Hadley. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're very happy with how that went.
Mr. Chairman, I can sort of add a little color to that. I mean, I think with the upgrade, there really were three areas that S&amp;P focused on. I think the very strong financial reserves, at the end of fiscal year 18, reserves to 16% of general fund expenditures, and that's considered by S&amp;P to be very strong. I think management and policies and practices were crucial here, and particularly OPEB. I think it was the OPEB policies, in fact, that put the town over the top. And then the economy, strong tax base. I mean, you've got a billion dollars of valuation with a population level over 5,000. That's, those are very strong numbers. Participation in a broad and diverse economy, the Springfield SMSA, that's considered to be a plus. They did express one concern that they'll be watching, and that is that the Springfield area economy isn't, is in fact, they're seeing signs of some deterioration, which they're gonna be watching. My feeling is that it would take quite a bit of deterioration for that to affect this newly assigned rating, but it's something to be aware of, and they did bring this up. So, yes, and I've worked with the town long enough to remember the single As in the 90s. The town had Moody's ratings from back in the day to, up to about 10 years ago. You know, the A rating was throughout the 90s until 97, A2 in 1997, and then AA3 in 2010, and actually, the town retired all of its Moody's rated bonds probably about seven or eight years ago. Town first had a, an S&amp;P rating in 2002, A+, upgraded to AA in 2009, upgraded to AA+ in 2014. So, that's a nice march upward. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you wanna have us talk about the bond issue itself.
I think it would be good to just at least summarize the bond issue, go through it a little bit, yeah.
Okay. Under the Massachusetts general laws, it is the treasurer, Linda Sanderson, who borrows on behalf of the town with the approval of the select board. And so, what you're doing, what we're doing now is observing the law with respect to executing borrowing. And the bonds that you have before you will finance about $8.15 million worth of capital costs, about $4.8 million for the senior center, $2.3 million for the fire substation, $540,000 for school renovations, about $393,000 for land acquisition, and $121,000 for the stormwater upgrade. The principal amount is actually less, it's $7,780,000. The difference between the capital costs and the principal amount is being funded by what is called bond premium. The town will pay the $7,780,000 in principal annually on the January 15th for 29 years, beginning in 2021 and ending in 2049, and the town will pay interest semi-annually beginning January 15th of 2020. The town released a disclosure document on the 27th, it was dated the 27th of June, took bids on Monday, received eight bids with the, which ranged all from 2.72% to 2.93%. The winning bid was from RW Baird out of their Milwaukee, Wisconsin office. The bonds will settle a week from today, Wednesday, the 17th, and the town will pay off approximately $4.8 million worth of notes on next Thursday, the 18th. That is a quick summary, and you should have a vote in front of you.
Yeah.
For your consideration to authorize the more than execution of the, of the bond issue.
Okay. Before we make the motion, do you guys have any questions or any other information you want to ask about and make the motion about?
No, I thought it was a great experience to listen to everything, and, and it's very interesting to listen to David talk about how the bond ratings work and purchasing the bond itself. So, I think it's been, done a great job. Questions?
Great. Okay. I'd like to move that the select board authorize the bonds as referenced in the documentation contained in the board docs agenda and available for inspection in the treasurer's office.
Just a second.
Okay, and just wanted to make that statement, because there's three pages of motion to make, and it would be quite lengthy to go through. Is there any further discussion?
Not really.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we just have to take a minute to sign.
Yeah, more than a minute.
All the documentation, and I believe we have to do it on camera. So, do we have the documentation here?
We do.
Okay.
We do.
So, I'm sorry for everyone viewing, but we're just gonna sign these real quickly.
This is important that it be on camera, so it's gonna stay on the select board. What we have here are, there are actually 21 individual bonds. There's one for each year payment, and you sign each, each of those at the tab, and then Jessica will then seal it as town clerk afterwards. Those are the bonds. There are three other certificates. One is the signature, no litigation, an official statement certificate, one is a tax certificate, and one is the continuing disclosure certificate. So, there aren't, each of those, there's four copies in, which each of you will sign in those folders.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we want to go in the same direction. And lastly, is the certificate of vote, which just you sign all four of those as clerk, David.
Okay, talk amongst yourselves.
Soundtrack music.
Yeah.
Heaven, there is no fear. That's why we drink it here.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your help. We're just, I'm just passing down. One for document, correct? I think.
One for document.
Yeah.
Well, bone go dry.
Add that in.
These are all signed. It might be slightly out of order, the one we're passing down.
One of the things I do before I send the documents on the road is I make sure everything's signed, sealed, and in order.
Yes. We will check them, and if anyone's missed a signature, they'll turn it right back.
We'll find you.
Yeah.
Find you. Where do you live? Where do you work? David will text in, "I'm up in a plane."
Joyce is doing her notes.
Oh, you got my notes, too?
I got it. Hold it up.
I think you were here.
She was here for Kestrel?
Yeah.
Oh.
So, I told her that Palm Dagno said we couldn't do it, so I didn't put them up.
Oh, yeah.
But we've got them lined up for another meeting.
Okay. I feel that. Down the home stretch.
Yep. This is the first folder. The second folder also will require a clerk's seal, so. Just get where they're at.
Now, this goes in this folder, so don't, don't want them to get into the other one.
So, just one per.
And I think, oh, yeah, the town clerk goes.
For an audience of one.
We pulled out a few people. Not too bad.
Do you ever make that stamp?
This stays with the yellow folder.
I don't see that. I don't see that. With Molly's name on it, you see?
All that.
I have a feeling that it would require original. You couldn't get away with a stamp on, on these.
No. This is probably the best meeting people have watched.
Everybody's smiling.
I hope Molly is watching the entire.
It's all good news.
This part.
Youtubing.
These were all in that folder.
This is gonna go in this folder, yeah. The blue folder. John didn't have such a long name. It would be dumb.
Yeah. You're gonna have to alter it here and there.
Can we just keep John Wash?
You need one of those signatures.
This is the red folder.
Well, you're selling the COA van. I don't know if you realize that we, the new one came in just in time for us to take the tour.
Oh, yeah.
With the standard.
When I was leaving, when I was at the public safety there, Mitch, Mitch Cook was driving it, right? He was driving it over.
Yes, he was. I mean, that really was a group effort.
Is that it?
Suzanne worked extra hard to make sure we had the exam there. It was supposed to come in a little bit later, but we pushed that. These.
I think I see more bonds there.
Oh, there are, yeah.
Some dinner?
Before, about 30 years ago, when the bonds were actual certificates, they were in $5,000 denominations. Imagine signing, not only the $5,000 denomination, but you had to sign replacement bonds in case, you know.
I was on school committee then. We didn't have to sign them 30 years ago.
Thankful for that.
Yeah.
That's only up to about 35 years ago.
Yeah. So, that means you've been doing this a long time, David?
Well, actually, I had a client who, actually, I'm all in the book entry era. I don't know, but I had a client who hadn't been much longer than when I was starting, but he had to sit for six hours. The treasurer of the community had to sit and sign.
Wow.
Not something that's, that's the book entry.
Sure. Yeah.
I'm assuming since they left the end-of-year transfers, we didn't miraculously finish those out before the end of the day?
They didn't show up and after all, so catch them next week.
It's $8 million. Everybody's very happy.
Not a problem at all. Go for an hour, doesn't make any difference. Money's good.
So, yeah, this has been a long time coming. And then the next one, so we're, we'll continue to do the short-term borrowing with the notes over the next year and a half, and then at this point, we're still planning that, to do the balance of the $7 million, a second bond in January of '21.
Will we have any bands between now and then? We will, okay.
Yes, it'll build up again, because the last borrowing will be after we're finished with the buildings.
The next round, the next bond is after the construction is?
Yes. Yes, yes. The la, the next bond will be to consolidate the bands into a bond in the long term. Yes, we won't be, it won't be, that's the plan. January '21, I think both projects will be done. But, so this might be a good time to remind people that we have already, these are $8 million, this is $8 million of band, but we already have some of this borrowing underway, and this is all part of the plan that we put in place a few years ago with a set amount of, of debt payment each year. That was going to stay within a certain cap. We are still within that cap. The taxes have already accommodated two years of payment on this long-term payment plan, and it will continue. This does not mean we're taking on, we're taking on new debt, but we're not taking on an increase in, in debt payments.
Or tax rate. It more or less seals what we've committed to.
Yes.
It doesn't increase taxes or anything we owe.
We already did it.
Yeah.
We took care of that upfront, because it was important to select board and those of us talking about it at the time, that it be an even payment schedule over time, as opposed to had we waited and started the borrowing, then you'd see a big increase, and they wanted to keep it even to know, to get to where, to get to where we needed to be, to service this kind of a debt, and to get there two years ago and stay there for the next 25 years. We're on schedule.
Say, I had some questions about the interest rate versus the projections. The conservative projection that was made when the senior center and the library were being planned was 5% based on market conditions at the time. We're at 2.7% basically, due to market conditions, due to our S&amp;P rating, and so that saves, I think it's $2.2 million in payments over the life of these bonds.
Just in interest. And that's, but that's, and that's just on this piece of this, so.
And so, we're talking about roughly, on average, $75,000 a year. It changes based on the year, but on average, $75,000 a year in savings versus what we had projected a year or two ago. So, just for those at home, the reference.
Right. Which probably means we're going to fit more of our additional borrowing, because we borrow, we, we vote every year to take on additional debt and buy equipment and trucks and various things. We'll be able to fit more of that within the same cap, so we'll be.
So, less impact on the tax rate?
Yes. Yes, it won't go down, but it won't go up.
Right.
Perfect.
Great.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you both so much.
Are your hands okay?
Oh, that was nothing. It's good.
I think I was in grade school last time. I gotta write that much. I got in trouble.
Oh, was that when you had to stay in for recess? And so, right on the board, I will not.
Yeah, yeah.
The blackboard.
The blackboard.
No, they, they gave me the industrial yellow line sheet.
Oh, was that it?
Oh, yes.
It was fun.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I can put it in order.
Okay, and so, we are going to delay the fiscal year 2009 end-of-year transfers until next week, I hope, when we have that information set. Sir, are you here for the mowing? It went to GTC Landscaping?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Just to let you know. Okay, and I think the next thing we have is senior center, library, and fire substation updates.
We vote on now, Jack. Do you need a, you wanna copy of the bids?
Yeah.
David, can you get that?
I'll take care of it. Would you like it now?
No, I'll be cool.
Yeah, we can just print it out.
Do you wanna come down with me? I don't have a nominal to print it off.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
Which probably means we're going to fit more of our additional borrowing, because we borrow, we vote every year to take on additional debt and buy equipment and trucks and various things. We'll be able to fit more of that within the same cap, so we'll be.
So, less impact on the tax rate, right?
Yes. It won't go down, but it won't go up.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you both so much. We really appreciate it.
Oh, that was nothing. It's good.
I think I was in grade school last time. I gotta write that much. I got in trouble.
Oh, was that when you had to stay in for recess? Right on the board, I will not.
Yeah, yeah.
The blackboard.
The blackboard.
No, they gave me the industrial yellow line sheet.
Oh, was that it?
Oh, yes.
It was fun. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I can put it in order.
Okay, and so, we are going to delay the fiscal year two thousand nine end-of-year transfers until next week, I hope, when we have that information set. Sir, are you here for the mowing? It went to GTC Landscaping? Okay, just to let you know. Okay, and I think the next thing we have is senior center, library, and fire substation updates.
We vote on now, Jack. Do you need a, you wanna copy of the bids?
Yeah.
David, can you get that?
I'll take care of it. Would you like it now?
Yeah, we can just print it out.
Do you wanna come down with me? I don't have a nominal to print it off.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so, we are going to, I believe, we gave authorization last meeting to sign the library contract, but we wanted to just take our final vote to.
Ratify it.
Ratify it. So, can we have a motion just to ratify the library construction contract?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, that's just that, I don't know if, since Molly is out this week, I don't know if we have any other updates on the library. The only thing I was gonna mention that I know of about the library is the, you know, obviously, when that library starts construction, parking is gonna be a little bit of an issue. And I don't know if municipal building committee or anything would have any kind of input. We were talking about putting a lot in over near the Russell School.
I did see where they're gonna speak about that, excuse me, at their next meeting.
They are, okay. Because maybe there's something we can do with this project where, if we've got to prep a parking lot for the contractors, is there something we can do?
They changed it. They changed it to a Tuesday night, and I have a sub-fire station committee meeting on Tuesday night.
Okay.
So, if mine finishes, we start at five with the financial, financial part of it.
Okay.
And then, five-thirty, we start with the other part of the sub-fire station. So, if I get done, I can get over to this meeting, but.
Okay.
See what happens.
Yeah.
You're saying maybe combine efforts as far as if we have to prep it, let's do it toward the parking lot.
Yeah.
They're actually going to have a discussion in their agenda about taking down this building over here, what use it will be, and they're talking about doing the library over there, too. So, they wanna know what we're going to do with this Russell School. So, that's next on their agenda to talk about that.
Okay.
And the parking that was recommended before there.
Okay.
Don't worry, we're checking these buildings off your list.
It's, I think it's good for the public to talk about and get this out there.
Yeah, and so, my, that's, my question was, could we do anything if we wanna put in a gravel parking lot, whatever, for the library construction? Could that maybe be paved at a future date, and is then our lot over here, combine those efforts? But I don't think there's anything else on the library, unless anybody else knows anything there. Do you have any updates on the fire substation?
I won't have anything. They just had a general contractor meeting this morning. They were prepping the site up north. They haven't started digging or doing anything else. They've mowed it, and that's about it up there, so next week I'll have more.
Okay. The senior center is moving forward. We did the water tie-in last, last week, is it last week? Two weeks ago, two weeks ago. That went, that went well. It, you know, installed that T overnight. We have the asbestos-containing material on Middle Street that we need to abate, so we have a, got a change order here tonight for us to vote on. It's a, it's quoted right now for eighty thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. That is for three days of abatement work. We're hoping it's less than this. However, with the unknowns of not knowing the extents of that material there, this is kind of our best stab. So, right now, this would be to approve this amount for the change, but we're, like I said, we're hoping it's less.
I should go through.
Second. Go ahead.
Did you have a call insurance company find out?
I have a call into the insurance company. I don't have an answer for you on that question. Question is whether our property insurance will cover this. Fairly certain is that it would not, but I will, I will have an answer.
That's something we may be able to be reimbursed for down the line if, and they will in cash coverage.
Yeah, I mean, insurance company pays for oil leaks and stuff like that, so.
The only.
You know, it's, it's an unknown. It's not like we put it there, you know?
Yeah, we'd like to start working on this as soon as possible between this issue and the issue with the water line tie-in not being as straightforward as they thought. You know, this is pushing the project out and does, we're just trying to get all the site work done to pave it in time. And trying to get this done as soon as possible is, is trying to race that clock against that clock.
So, this was discovered when they were trying to do the utility tie-ins, right?
This was the storm water drainage pipe.
The overflow drainage.
Yeah.
And so, has this pushed back anything on the site really so far, or they just continued on and waiting for this until later on?
It's compounding. So, the problem is, is that this was supposed to be done. We were supposed to have that site work done, but now materials are starting to arrive for the building without this being done. It's a tight site. So, it's like trying, now it's a chess game of moving things around to be able to do this while trying to build the building at the same time, getting that stuff in. So, it has definitely complicated things. So, we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the parking issue that we voted on last time to authorize the use of Russell School for contractor parking. If there's anything that we need to do as far as material storage, anything like that, that will help move things along, I don't have a problem with putting there as long as they put up fencing to obscure that from the public view. So, if that's something that will speed the project along and avoid delays, then I don't have a problem with doing that.
But it will have to be fenced in.
Yeah, I just don't want it, like we had with ETNL with all kinds of junk piled up there last time around. So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it. If we can save some money that way, then.
Sure.
How does the rest of the board feel about that?
Sorry.
Yeah, I mean.
I just wanted to, I was.
We know we're limited over there, so.
I was just asking them for a little bit of a plan before we voted on it, so that VPW was well aware of what they wanted to do.
Do they have an idea of how much excess land they're gonna have? They can probably bring that to the highway garage and relieve some of that pile.
Over, over.
Over at the site, yeah.
The senior site.
And you truck it and then truck it back at the end if they need to.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think we could do something over there. It's just how many cars are they gonna have? How many cars can we fit there?
Well, I was talking about on the, not against Middle Street, I was talking about closer to Russell School, where the kind of ETNL had their piles of stuff and their equipment last time.
Yeah, yeah.
Where we have to store stuff, as long as the fire chief's okay with where it's stored in VPW, then let's let him store it and get it off their site, and so they can move it along, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we're limited down VPW, too, but I mean, if the good material that we would be taking the excess of anyway, we do have room for that there.
Yeah, I think they wanna use some of, they're, they're thinking that most of the loan that's there, they're gonna use in putting the site back together, but. Well, so you were saying for the senior center, they could stage some stuff.
Right, because if stuff's arriving now, they don't have room to put it because of the delays with the asbestos, then tell them to put up some of the construction fence with that netting that you can't see through, so that really isn't, people on Middle Street and Route Nine aren't looking at trash piles, piles of equipment and stuff.
Okay.
And then, let them move along.
I misunderstood. I thought you were talking for parking.
Oh, no, no, just the equipment, materials, whatever they need to do, is just to keep things moving.
Yeah, I mean, we can offer that to them if that, that's something they wanna do.
I'll talk to the two OPMs about that tomorrow.
Yeah, I can let Phil know.
I guess my, my hope would be that it would be a temporary storage as well, just until we can catch up with the asbestos removal and things like that. I don't wanna see it there for a year.
Yeah, the problem is gonna be is that, as, you know, as soon as the library project gets going, we're gonna need parking.
Yeah, as soon as demolition starts, that's gonna be it.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, John, the time-lapse camera, do you wanna say something about that real quick?
Sure.
Can I be on camera?
Sure, sure.
Okay, it's somewhere over here. So, we just, we bought a cheap time-lapse camera, which is a camera that basically snaps a picture every interval that you set. So, you set it to, for example, I'm probably gonna set it to shoot between like seven AM and twelve AM. Maybe seven AM and, seven AM and one or two during the time when they're working, and it'll shoot every probably five seconds. And then, it basically operates for a really long time without any battery, without changing the batteries. They last for seventy-eight days. So, we have to go out there every so often and change the double As, and it's gonna be cool, because we're gonna put it on a pole just outside of the site. It's, it's pole, it's a utility pole that's actually in the Legion parking lot, on the very corner of the site, gets the whole site. My idea was to put it on a tree, kind of facing the building, and Phil was like, I think you should put it on this, this pole. It'd be better, get a better view of the whole site, and we'll get to see the thing going up from the ground up, and then we'll get to use the same camera for either the demolition of this, of the Hooker School, or the raising of the new library, or both.
Probably both.
Yeah, if we could definitely do it.
Two hundred bucks.
Yeah, good investment.
Yeah, it was a good investment. There's companies that are offering to do that service for people that are building buildings for a lot of money.
Yeah.
And this'll be a fine thing, and we'll be able to create a cool video when we're done, and we're excited about that. We also did some filming of how the common thing the other day.
Oh, nice, yeah.
I'm editing it up and putting together a little short thing. You weren't there.
I know, yeah. My mom and my wife's best friends.
So, that was fun. So, that's about it. I'm gonna put it up tomorrow.
Oh, great.
Got the camera map off the wall. So, we're all set.
Great. Yeah, thanks, John.
Thank you. So, I'm forward to it.
Yeah. All right, for old businesses appointments, so we have our last meeting. We had some things that looked missing in the appointment list, but I think there was some confusion versus who needs to be appointed. The list was more renewing appointments, not as much who is all on those committees. So, I don't know, Jennifer, if you have anything to.
That is correct. How I created the appointment list was just the people who were renewing or had submitted a letter, which was also included, asking to be appointed to a committee. So, it had their committee name, the term of that committee appointment, and then the people that needed to be renewed. And I'm sorry I wasn't here to explain what that was, but I will say that I did leave off two appointments that I am asking you to make tonight. They are included in the list. And it is Susan Velatsky as the parking clerk. I'm asking you to appoint her for term to the end of her election term, electoral term. And also, Chris Oakfer is the moth superintendent and tree warden. I'm asking you to make his for term as well, for the term of his contract. And then, I went ahead and left the whole appointment sheet as it was. I just added those two on, because I didn't, I was unclear if we needed to revote or not. I thought this was the safest way, just to make sure we got everybody. I will say that I will probably be back next week with some changes, 'cause I have received some notices from people asking to be, asking to be removed from the list, and they no longer wish to serve on committees.
Okay, and do we have a list of everybody that's on the committees?
I did not attach that. I did not.
Okay.
What it, it does exist. I just.
You'll, you'll find it in your annual report.
Oh, yeah, the annual report, yeah.
Yes, but keep in mind, that's two thousand eighteen. Anybody that's been appointed since January first of that year is not in it, of this year is not in it for the two thousand eighteen report.
Exactly, yeah, that was one thing I was, but they should be on this, correct?
If they were just appointed in January of, from January to now, no, they will not be on this list.
No, they won't be, okay.
No, this is only people whose terms expired January thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
And new folks.
That's why Mr. Kousha is not on here, because he's not up for reelection.
He's smacked down in the middle of his three-year term. I would not leave Matt off. I know, I know Matt's very active in the agricultural commission. I promise. But there will be some changes coming, and I'll also have a list, I'm hoping by next week for all, of all the vacancies.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say. If we can get the vacancies and keep announcing them, hopefully, we can get some folks from the community to film.
Post it on the access channel.
Absolutely. And I'll put it on the webpages, and it's what happened.
Yeah, David can post it on his networks.
So, make a motion to accept the appointments before us.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a aye with the exception of shade tree and municipal building. I have to abstain from those two.
I should abstain from cultural council, and I think that's it.
We went through that, 'cause we vote for ourselves for sewer commissioner and water commissioner anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, according to Boston, we can vote for these positions at this time.
One more.
When we're appointing everybody.
Okay, last thing here is our town administrator report. David, I don't know if you wanna take us.
Certainly.
For anything we haven't covered.
Haven't covered.
Haven't covered, okay. Make it short, in other words. Okay, compensation classification plan is coming in for landing. We're meeting next Tuesday with department heads, and Mr. Jacobs will meet with the select board to finish this whole project up. And Route Nine sidewalk project, this project is now complete. Mass DOT agreed on June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. We wrote it down. That Mass DOT will maintain and plow their sidewalks for this project and for the future projects.
For the entire length of Route Nine, or just the new sidewalks?
They, they said that they will take care of their sidewalks in their project area, which includes.
What date was that, June twenty-fifth?
June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen.
And it was at the stakeholders' meeting?
Yep.
Hell, that DOT offices.
It was a vote.
Oh, they said it at the other one, too?
They said it at the DOT office.
Yeah, well, at the DOT office, I asked that question, and they followed up, but, yeah, I don't know if they said anything.
I also checked in with KP Long, the issue of town's liability, and they don't like dealing with hypotheticals, but they said in general, the town would not be on the liability hook if we did not plow.
Excellent.
Any of them, our own or state?
Our own, different from the state.
Okay. So, if we don't maintain the state, we're not liable for it.
That's what they told me.
Okay.
All right, just skipping over things that we've, unidirectional flushing, this project has been put on hold for the season to allow for seasonal, high summer seasonal use of the water lines, and we'll start this project back up in September. Those results will be used for the next capital improvement plan for water infrastructure. OSHA update, we're going to submit a request for the Department of Labor standards to do a, an evaluation of the town in order to get out in front of this issue, so that we're gonna come in, they're gonna take, they're gonna come in, they're gonna take a look at our worker's safety and workplace safety. Obviously, these are very high priorities, and if there are any deficiencies, they'll let us know, but the main thing is that we will not be subject to enforcement, because we're complying on our own.
When are they coming? Do we have a date they're coming in?
I've submitted, I'm submitting any letter, and I don't have a date.
Okay.
They've been here already, so.
Yeah.
But they, they said they're, they're going to make dates to come back at our request.
Elementary school pavilions, that project is happening again. They're working on the roof. This project has commenced after hiatus. Affordable housing DLT study grant, we met with the planning board the last time. It didn't look like they wanted to be really involved in this, so I talked to PVPC and said, please proceed this, for this project, as if it were a select board project, so that's gonna move forward.
Have you got any response back from them? They were at the meeting on some of the issues we asked questions on?
No, I don't have, I don't have answers for that. Although, I did follow up on some intriguing discussion about funding. There were some grant programs that they were talking about that I didn't know about, so I told them I was much more interested in knowing about what they were, how much money we're talking about, how do we apply.
Is that block grant that they were talking about at District Two, is that part of Piner Valley planning, or is that just the state?
That would be state.
That was just the state.
It's federal money that's administered by the state.
Okay. That's what it sounded to me, but I'm just double checking.
All right, we got the municipal. All right, we got the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant for fifteen thousand dollars, so we're up and running on that project. Hadley Kids Incorporated, the transfer has been requested by the school department, so that project is now substantially complete. Stormwater update, we have worked on compliance for this particular fiscal year for the MS4 requirement. The, the required information about MS4 is now posted on the Hadley DPW webpage, which includes Hadley's illicit discharge and detection elimination plan, the protecting water quality from urban runoff brochure from the US EPA, stormwater brochure, stormwater management plan. In addition, the town is performing street sweeping and catch, and catch basin cleaning as required by MS4. So we're now entering into the phase of MS4 where it's going to be costing us a little bit more in terms of operational costs. We have that money set aside. We're still partnering with PVPC for a regional approach that will save us money.
And we have some bylaws coming up in the special town meeting for MS4. Is that related to these things?
Right, so we're required at the October 24th special town meeting to pass both general bylaws as well as zoning bylaws having to do with stormwater management. So PVPC is working with the planning board for that. We had a brief discussion about that at the department head meeting today, so that's moving forward in a good course. We had that stakeholders' meeting on June 25th about the various Mass DOT projects. One, the Damon Road intersection. Two, the Bay Road Bridge replacement and the Route Nine widening project. On page six of my report, you'll find a timeline for these projects. There's a considerable overlap between the Bay Road Bridge replacement and the Route Nine widening project, which would greatly affect or have a, we would expect that it would have a great effect upon traffic flow east and west along Bay Road and Route Nine. So we've asked Mass DOT to push the Bay Road Bridge replacement off until after Route Nine widening. They seem to be open to that, but we don't have any definitive answers right now. Mass Works Grant, okay, so we're looking at a Mass Works grant application. And the question is whether if, this is a three-year program. You can apply once every three years. And if we apply this year, will that put us in a bad position to apply for the Route Nine widening project? Chris Oakfer, DPW director, and I sat down, planned it out, and we think although it's going to be tight, I think it's doable. So we're going to apply for a Mass Works grant for improvements for the West Street Common and Environments. Bring that in front of the select board on your meeting in August for the grant deadline to have you take a formal vote on that. But we think that will put us in a good position for applying again in three years for the water and sewer infrastructure upgrades on the Route Nine project. Revenues look good. Expenses have come back under control through May. I did some projections for June and there's nothing there that makes my hair stand on end, so. FY 2020 budget, the conference committee is still meeting. And I hope that they will come out of conference soon and we'll find out what our final state aid is all about. We talked about the bond rating. These FY 2019 audit is going to start soon. July 24th to 25th will be the preliminary site visit. October 7th to the 11th will be the main site visit. And then our goal is to complete that audit earlier than the prior years. We're also completing upon July 31st the updated OPEB actuarial analysis. And we're going to be meeting with our OPEB actuarial in August in order to plot the way forward for managing our unfunded OPEB liability in the future. July 13th, the residential electricity aggregation program opt out. Get your cards in the mail if you're opting out. July 31st, OPEB actuarial report due. August 7th, capital budgets are due. August 28th, SWAT analyses are due. September 4th, special town meeting articles are due. October 9th, we post a special town meeting warrant. The 17th, we hold a public forum. And the 24th of October is the main show. And I should also include, next week, we're going to be talking about select board goals and objectives. So that will come up on the 17th. That'll probably be a topic that will take a meeting or two.
And then one other thing on there too is the August 9th CPA application deadline?
Yeah.
Got that.
Any questions?
No.
Good. All right, any announcements?
I have one. Code Red doesn't exist anymore, so the new system is Nixle. If you haven't already signed up, you can text Hadley to 888-777. And it'll walk you through the process of signing it up, but it's very easy. And that's what the community will be using for emergency notifications as well as informational notifications in the future. So get signed up. We've got-
What do you text?
Hadley to the number 888-777. Or you can go to the Hadley, Hadley website and, and opt in that way.
Looks like you can also type in your, text your zip code.
Yep, there's all kinds of ways. So it's easy, so there's not a single person in town that shouldn't be in the bill.
Okay.
Zip code. All right. Have to find some sucker to show me.
Give me your phone, Joyce.
I'll give it to you. Okay.
Okay, any other announcements?
I just have a few. We haven't been here for a couple of weeks. So I'd like to send out condolences to a few families from the select board. Bethiam Lee of Michaeline Martin. She worked for a number of years in our school department. Irene Russell, her husband lived in North Hadley and had one son, and she has several grandchildren. John Harper lived in North Hadley and has his family, so we send our condolences to them. And then Eugene Newman and his wife Christine, we send our condolences to her also. So from our select board.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't have any announcements right now? Okay, I think we've covered everything, so a motion to adjourn.